Turn the light on, you can hear me better. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going through a process of two public hearing process agendas here tonight. And this time, I'll ask the staff to give us some procedures for our procedures and the policies that we have for each of our public hearings.
There we go.
Okay.
So, we have a joint special meeting and a joint public hearing. We'll first have the joint public hearing. It is for 1708, number three, Rice Dryer Business Park. And then we'll have the joint special meeting. It's for 1571-5 South Freeway for a cigar, tobacco, or e-cigarette within a planned development. Each item has a public meeting or hearing conducted as follows. There will be a call to order, followed by a staff report, applicant presentation, then public comments in either support or opposition. At that time, please come forward to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record. Please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Then complete a speaker's card and give it to your recording secretary on my left. Then there will be council, commission, and staff discussion, followed by an adjournment. At the joint special meeting, city council will hold a vote to either approve, approve with conditions, deny, or table the item after the discussion is complete. And at the joint public hearing, Planning and Zoning Commission will hold their regular meeting tonight after the public hearings later on this evening, and they will vote with their recommendation for zoning. Speaking at the P&amp;Z meeting is at P&amp;Z's discretion. The council meeting for that item will be on May 14th and then May 21st.
I complete your report?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to proceed with the Rice Dryer Road Public Hearing first and then the CUP later. Let me open, incidentally, I will open each one of our public hearings with a gavel. We'll go through the process and then I'll officially close it with a gavel and define the times and purpose of the record. If you have questions, if you want to speak later in the agenda, either speak in support of or in opposition, be sure to use the podium. You've got about three minutes, and if you could, if you could kind of confine your comments. And if you had any questions, we cannot dialogue with you because it has not been a posted item, but go ahead and ask the question, one of our staff will pick it up and work with it later. So at this time, let me open a doggy public hearing for application eight, Zone Change 18-0003. Ask the chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record the purpose of their hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Zone Change Application Number Zone 18-00003, a request of Tetra surveys represented by David White, applicant on behalf of Presidio Equities LLC, represented by Ryan Taft, owner, for approval of an addendum to add land and change the zoning from the Light Industrial M1 zoning district to Planned Development PD Rice Dryer Business Park zoning district on approximately 22.8627 acres of land, the approximate 22 acres at the southwest corner of Rice Dryer Road and North Main Street, State Highway 35, with an address of 1916 North Main Street.
I also want to call to your attention the fact you want to speak on the subject later, which is going to be item, item three on our agendas. You must fill out one of these forms and give it to that lady, charming lady at the end of her. Moving in our agenda to item number two on our agenda, application information case summary, staff report.
All right, so this is an addendum to add land and change the zoning within a planned development. The PD is the Rice Dryer Business Park. General location is the southwest corner of Rice Dryer and North Main, and the current zoning of the property is M1. The future land use shows this area as industrial and public semi-public. There were two phone calls generally requesting information about the project, and there was one return notice that had insufficient addressing. The code conformance table is as follows. It's in conformance with the State Highway 35 Redevelopment Strategy Plan that was passed by council. There is that issue with a portion of the land that is public semi-public within the future land use category. That's something that we are addressing in a future update to the future land use plan. The thoroughfare plan has a 10-foot dedication for Hallick and Rice Dryer Roads, which is currently being addressed through plating of the property. The Unified Development Code, this PD would address some changes to the approved design plan and would generally allow for greater flexibility, still maintaining a high-quality product. Plating of the property is underway, and the property has city services available to the site. Staff recommends approval of the requested change in zoning on the approximate 22.8627 acre site as it is approvable through the criteria for planned development. As I said, the only big issue, or small issue really, is that public semi-public that we are addressing in a future update. This completes staff's report, and I will leave you with the zoning map and the future land use plan map.
Moving to item 3B, 2B, applicant presentation of the applicant here. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Bobby Orr, 5400 Katy Freeway Suite 100, Houston 77007. This is a modification of the application we had made previously. The modification is essentially we're adding a four-acre tract that we had owned for some time that was not part of the application. I want to include that piece as well. It's currently where the rice silos are, and also some change up the application to provide us some flexibility if, in the event, we had a single tenant building as opposed to all those individual buildings that were on the original application. That's the extent of our amendment to this original application. Thank you.
Very good. Moving to item number C, staff wrap-up comments?
No additional comments.
Wrap-up comments, okay. Let's move to item number three, and ask Mayor Protem to pick up from here on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any persons wishing to speak for or against? I don't see any cards submitted, but if there's anybody in the audience that is wishing to speak for or against?
Pink slip out there, will you plan to speak?
Okay. Or against this agenda item? I guess not. Well, thank you.
Good. No individuals want to speak at this point? Moving to item number four on our collective agendas. Councilmember Carbone, would you want to lead off on comments on this item?
I know last time we saw this, there was a neighboring property owner that voiced some concern. On the public, or on your recap, you said there was no notices that were received in opposition. Have we heard from that adjoining property owner?
We reached out to them and had a conversation about the update to the PD. It was a good conversation.
All right. Thank you.
Another one?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also feel for this adjoining property owner, but this is better than what could be there, so I don't see any problem with this. I'm for it.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Reed?
No comment, Mayor.
No comment? Councilmember, or no?
No comment.
Councilmember Little?
No comment.
Councilmember Perez?
No comment.
And Councilmember Owens?
I got one. I just want to follow what we talked about previously, and I guess the economic development of, what, 200,000 that's going to be going in to remove those? Is that a not-to-exceed number?
It is a not-to-exceed number.
Okay. And it's my understanding we only get it back just when the property is sold.
Correct.
And we don't get any interest off the money after, you know, if it takes a year, two years, or three years to sell the property before we get anything back?
On the $200,000, yes.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like a good way to loan money.
I mean, just to clarify for tonight, we're voting on just the amendment to the PD, and we'll have those agreements that come back to us potentially in a future meeting. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
I complete your comment?
If it's coming back, yes. I'm very sorry. I just want to clarify, actually, those agreements were actually ratified or approved by council at the most recent council meeting in exact session.
Okay, good. Moving in our agenda to Planning Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
I don't have any comment at this time.
No further comments, Mayor.
I complete your report. Moving in our agenda to Stafford discussion, wrap-up?
The wrap-up.
None, okay. Moving down to item five, which will permit me to adjourn this particular public hearing, which I showed you at 6:43. Moving in our agenda sequence, let me open a planning and zoning public hearing between City Council, City of Pearland, and the City Council, City of Pearland. Ask the chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to first call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Let the record show that David Selsky is not present. Item one on the joint special meeting, conditional use permit application number CUP 18-00004. This is a request of Tiffany Lamb, applicant on behalf of 4GF Group LLC, owner, for approval of conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for a cigars, tobacco, or e-cigarette shop, cigar time, located in the Planned Development PD Shadow Creek zoning district on approximately 2.3359 acres of land. The general location is 15,715 South Freeway.
I complete your report. Moving to item A on our agenda, application information case summary, staff report.
So, this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a cigar, e-cigarette shop. The current zoning is Shadow Creek Plan Development, and the future land use is 288 Gateway, and it's located at 15,715 South Freeway. So far, we haven't received any comment in favor or against the proposed use. For code conformance table, the proposed use is in conformance with comprehensive plan. The proposed use is retail, which is in conformance with 288 Gateway. And also, it's in conformance with Unified Development Code, as the applicant is not proposing any significant changes to the suite. Staff recommend approval for the requested CUP for a cigar, tobacco, or e-cigarette shop on the approximately 2.3359 acre site for the following reason. And the proposed use meets all the criteria listed in this table. And this is, as you can see, the first map is the zoning and aerial map of the property showing that is located in Shadow Creek Plan Unit Development. And the second one is the map showing the future land use plan. This completes the staff report.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Move to item number A2, which is the applicant's presentation, and I believe we do have an applicant here, don't we?
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Lamb. I'm here to apply for our fourth cigar shop. This is our expansion to our existing three shops that we have, and we're just going to sell cigars and no e-cigarette. That's all I have.
Oh, good. Appreciate that. Those are good comments.
Thank you.
Let's move to 3B, 3, A3, which is wishing to speak for or against proposal. I'll have Mayor Protem pick at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Doesn't look like there's anybody in here today, but is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this agenda item? Okay. Pass it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move to 3, move to item B, which is Planning Commission, City Council, and Staff Discussion. Let me ask the chairman of the Planning Commission to lead off with his portion.
Thank you, Mayor. Daryl, do you have any comments? Starting on your end.
Is strictly going to be a cigar shop, is that correct? Okay. I'm not familiar with that area, but there's no schools or anything like that around there, is there? Okay. All right. I'm okay with it.
Sam's. Mayor, the commissioners don't have any comments. I'm in support of this item.
I complete your report. Okay. That information in the record, let's move down to City Council, starting with Councilmember Owens.
I don't have any comment.
Perez?
No objection to the use of this location?
Little?
Considering the locations on the access road at 288, no schools or even houses close to it, I don't have a problem with it.
Senator Hartman?
I don't have a problem with it.
Senator Reed?
No comment, Mayor.
And question more?
No comment, Mayor.
That's for Carbone. Okay. Move to item 3B3, which is staff wrap-up comments?
No additional comments, Mayor. No more.
No comments? Okay. That information wrapped up from the initial part of the public hearing process. Let's move to item C, which propens to council new business. I'll ask Councilmember Carbone, would you present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution R2018-CUP180004. So moved? Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion, and I think staff want to make any further comments at this point?
No further comments, Mayor. No further comments.
Okay. And I'll, if the council had any question or comment on this item at this point. Here you go. Mr. Chairman, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. That information in the record. I will move to item down the way here and bring this to a close by adjourning this particular standalone public hearing for CUP 1820004 and close at 6:51.
Likewise, Planning and Zoning will also close.
What this does is it completes the Planning and Zoning Commission team working, and now the Planning Commission will take over. The city council will move from this particular location. They will move up here, and they will be with you for the rest of the evening. So, thank all of you for waiting, and our Planning Commission will be visiting with
We'll go ahead and call it. Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from Monday, April 16, 2018, at 6:56 PM. Let the record show David Selsky is not present. Moving on to item two, our consent agenda, we have one item. Item A1, approve the P&amp;Z minutes from Monday, April 2, 2018.
I move that they be approved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item three, new business. Item A, consideration and possible action, approval of a flag lot to allow for the development of property. This is a request by Jeff Freeman of LJA Engineering, applicant on behalf of AS143 Shadow Creek Ranch LP, represented by Cindy McGill, and Shadow Creek Plaza LLC, represented by Hassan B. Mohammedian, sorry. Owners for approval of a variance permitted in section 2.6.1B1 of the Unified Development Code, ordinance number 2000T, to allow for approval of the creation of a flag lot with a planned unit development zoning district. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Tonight, we have a P&amp;Z variance, VAR P18-00003, and the summary of this request is it's for approval of a flag lot permitted in section 2.6.1.1B, number one of the Unified Development Code, ordinance number 2000-T. As you see, the lot area is 22,500 square feet that's required. It is proposed to be 4.784 acres, roughly 208,396 square feet. The lot width minimum is 150 feet. What's proposed is varies from 50 alone, the proposed flag lot, to approximately 505 feet. The lot depth requirement is 125 feet, and what's being proposed is 980.08 feet. The general location is 12,300 Shadow Creek Parkway. The purpose is to create a flag lot in a PUD zoning district, and the proposed intended use is a senior multifamily development. Staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of a requested variance for the following reasons. Consistent with the purpose and intent of the applicable zoning district, it meets conformity. It preserves the character in adjacent developments and mitigate development-related adverse impacts. It meets conformity there, and also it meets the standards for the zoning district. This is Exhibit One, which is a zoning and aerial map of the site, and this is a preliminary plat of the site as well. And this concludes staff reports. Yes, so Lots One and Two are being replanted, but the flag lot is, yes, indeed, Lot Two.
Commissioners, the next case is the preliminary plat that's the companion case to this variance.
So, what you're looking at right now is just for the approval of the flag lot? Because without the flag lot being approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, the plat cannot be approved.
We'll go ahead and start with comments from, start with Mary.
I have no objection to it.
No objection to it?
So, I have a couple of questions. It's for a senior, basically, a senior apartment complex?
Yes, sir.
And it's part of a PD already?
Yes, that's correct.
So, there's already a number of apartments or apartment units that's built into that PD?
There are some. As far as multifamily, there aren't any in that. There are some, as far as multifamily, there aren't any in that general location. But I know there's some regular apartments to the south, and then to the east of the property.
My question is, will this one put them over, the number for the PD?
Commissioner, Shadow Creek sees senior living separate from multifamily use, so it's separated from the count. So senior living is not included in that count.
Okay, so what prevents them from turning senior living into regular multifamily?
So, right now, per the PD, senior living is separate. However, it will, you know, if, if they don't get their senior living quota, it's essentially the same use.
So if they don't get their senior living quota, does it go against their overall total?
So, right now, we're counting, and maybe the applicant, if they're here, they can explain, but we're counting this one as senior living, and I think there's other, some other components to the use as well, other than just the senior living component to it. But in regards to the PD, the PD treats senior living facilities separate from multifamily facilities.
I'm just concerned, because I know that the schools are absolutely crushed out here, and if we're putting in a facility that can easily be turned into multifamily without much additional oversight from the city, it really concerns me, especially unless we're still underneath the overall total multifamily for the entire PD. Because I know that there's a set amount that they were supposed to have.
Right, so.
That should have been planned.
The overall total, we are right at that total, or getting very close. There are a few more, I don't have that number in front of me right now, but there are a few more units, but not a lot. So we're right at that total, for the maximum total that's allowed for multifamily units in that PD.
Commissioner Tonstall, if it helps, I'm sorry, Commissioner Duncan, if it helps, if they want, if they weren't able to make the senior living work, they would have to do a change of use or change of occupancy, and bring that in front of the city's community development staff. And at that time, community development would look at those thresholds, and determine whether or not it could be converted. And if they think that it cannot, if there's too many apartments or multifamily in the area, and they're exceeding that number, they would have to do a zone change to allow a change on the senior living to the multifamily. And then that zone change would have to come in front of the P&amp;Z, and notifications would have to go out to everybody inside that PUD unless an alternative notification procedure was given. So that may be the safeguard that you're looking at, to make sure that it is not converted without scrutiny being applied to measure whether or not it's meeting the needs of the community at the time.
Those are all my questions.
I guess I do have a question for Lawrence. If you could help the commission along here, what would be a reason to deny a flag lot approval?
So I believe the section in the UDC has, it's not the same criteria for approval as your traditional things for a variance. However, I think that what you would have to look at is whether or not that layout, or that flag lot seems to make sense to you, in light of its infrastructure and how things are going to work. From the planning staff and engineering staff's perspective, this particular flag lot would meet any criteria for a variance request, especially because it has the 50-foot flag pole section on the flag, which would allow traffic to come forward on that lot. If the two lots were sold separately, it would have the, the infrastructure to support either development independently. And I would suggest that that's where you focus your scrutiny, as to whether or not to approve the variance request.
So currently, the property is bound by the City of Pearland, and apartments to the east, the columns at Shadow Creek Ranch?
Mm-hmm.
Are you asking for an aerial of the area, so that she could better see what it is that you're looking at in relation to the things around it? Maybe staff can navigate to a, an aerial to accommodate that.
I'm sorry, the wifi is not, not helping me out on my iPad here. And if the developers here, is Lot 1 going to be used with the same apartment complex? If you could come up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
My name is Greg Patch with LJA Engineering. The intent here is, and we do have representatives of the clients here who need to get into greater detail, their business model is, is they generally prepare senior housing. The product that we're showing in front will be a senior housing development, and much of the design is specifically geared to those. Their typical product, the average age of a tenant in their building is 70 years old. So they're very much in catering to that, and often inside, they will have a lot of the programs that will address the senior. Currently, the property in the rear is looking, and it may have some different function, but would be more in the areas of assisted living. And it could have a different model, but often is the case, they will take the folks in the senior housing, again, their average age is 70 years old, so they provide something to the rear that is somewhat complementary. As those folks grow older, or maybe it's a husband and wife, and one of the other ones has developed that they need additional care, they would normally then piggyback and go to the property to the rear. That has been their business model, I know they've had success with that, but that is the intent. And then, folks that would run assisted living, obviously would be different than would run the apartment complex. And the reason you generally have two different ownerships, because, again, they are a different type product. People that run assisted living facilities are obviously a lot different expertise than the ones that would operate the senior housing. That's kind of the intent. But there will be a need to create separate partnerships, separate entities, and even just for the issues of liability, that they would keep those separate. That answers your question.
Thank you.
And I will say, the property next to us, I think, is owned, the apartment you see on the east is Broadstone, and then the tract in between that is actually Texas Medical. So, that and all the property to the rear would be, would be, I know they've done nothing so far, but could be a medical, which honestly would tend to complement senior housing and assisted living.
Thomas, do you have further comments? Laney? Daryl? It looks like the commission doesn't have any further comments or questions. All raise your vote. Anything else? Go ahead.
So we haven't reached the limit on senior living for this particular area, correct?
Not for senior living, no sir.
But for apartments, Shadow Creek Ranch has maxed out.
Just about, as far as a regular multifamily.
Well, my only opinion of this, and it, you know, if the numbers are what they are, and you can build more, more family, multifamily, no matter what it is, the residents in that area are done with apartments, and they're just going to see more apartments going in. That's what they're going to see. Whether they're 55-plus or not, I don't think it really matters to the person that thinks there's, there's too many apartments in Shadow Creek Ranch right now. So that's, that's my only opinion of it. I'm a no on this one. If there's no further questions, we will put this to a vote. All those in favor, signify raising your right hand. All those opposed? We have a tie of 3 to 3. Okay, moving on to item B.
Commissioner Tonstall, it would be helpful, with a tie being 3-3, it needs a positive recommendation from the council, I'm sorry, from the commission. So the announcement would be that the motion failed, because it didn't have a majority at this time.
I stand corrected. So the item failed, 3 to 3. Moving on to item B. Consideration of possible action preliminary plat of Lake Spur Community, Shadow Creek. If I could ask, do we need to go on to item B or not?
In light of the variance from the prior item failing, it is not possible to approve the preliminary plat on item B. However, we would recommend that you, we'll still do the staff presentation, but because the flag lot was not approved, it does not conform to the city's requirements, and I believe staff is revising its presentation as I speak, so that they can address that accordingly.
So I'll go ahead and read it into, into the record. Consideration of possible action preliminary plat of Lake Spur Community, Shadow Creek. This is a request of Jason Price, LJA Engineering, the applicant on behalf of Lake Spur Shadow Creek LLC. Owner for the approval of preliminary plat of Lake Spur Community, Shadow Creek, creating two lots on 11.958 acres of land located on the north side of Shadow Creek Parkway, about 600 feet east of Kingsley Drive.
The preliminary plat of Clark Spur Community, Shadow Creek, is the companion case for the, the variance that was previously voted on, and at this time, it cannot be approved without the approval of the, of a variance to allow a flag lot.
With that information, we'll move on to item C in the agenda.
I believe it's still best to take a vote on it at this time, otherwise, by default, without a vote, the mission, the plat would go forward, well, it's a preliminary plat, so, at this point, because we've gone this far, I think it's best to take a record vote on the item.
Okay. Commissioners, I need a, I need a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about item B? Mary?
No, I think the whole thing is probably a good idea, but.
Right.
I disagree. No more apartments in there, no matter if there are senior living or not.
Thomas? Laney? Daryl? Hearing no further comments. All those in favor, signify raising your right hand. We have two, all those opposed. Motion fails 4 to 2. Moving on to item C, consideration of possible action master plat of Modern Green Ivy District. This is a request of Jason Price, LJA Engineering, the applicant on behalf of American Modern Green Development LLC. Owner for approval of the master plat of Modern Green Ivy District, creating five lots and three reserves on 47.062 acres of land located in the southwest quadrant of State Highway 288 and Spectrum Boulevard. This is the southwest quadrant of State Highway 288 and Spectrum Boulevard. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I have staff report.
The master plat of Modern Green Ivy District is a, a result of the, or tied to the Modern Green Plan development that is covering the property. It's located at the southwest quadrant of State Highway 288 and Spectrum Boulevard. As for the code conformance table, it does conform to the comprehensive plan, thoroughfare plan, Unified Development Code. The plating is in process, and also has conformity utilities and drainage plan approval. TIA approval, that will be required prior to final plat approval. In this instance, the park dedication and SIA approved and tree mitigation are not Staff recommends approval of the master plat of Modern Green Ivy District for the following reasons. It is consistent with all the zoning requirements and the comprehensive plan. The proposed public improvements and easement meets the standards and are adequate. The schedule of development is feasible, the land is within a PD, and the design of the plat conforms to that PD. The location, size, and sequence assures orderly development of the property. Also, the plat conforms to the subdivision application checklist. And the last slide, slide that concludes the staff report is aerial photograph and a map of the master plat. And that concludes my presentation.
We'll start on the other end with Daryl. Do you have any comments?
No comment.
No comment.
So we've been looking at this one for a long time, and glad to see it's moving forward. I have no further comments from the commission. All those in favor, signify raising your right hand. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to item D. Consideration of possible action preliminary plat of Modern Green Ivy District. This is also a request of Jason Price, LJA Engineering, the applicant on behalf of American Modern Green Development LLC. Owner for approval of the preliminary plat of Modern Green Ivy District, creating five lots and three reserves on 47.062 acres of land, southwest quadrant, State Highway 288 and Spectrum Boulevard. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Laney, a second from Mary. Have staff report.
This item is the preliminary plat that is based on the master plat of Modern Green Ivy District. As for the code conformance table, again, it conforms to the comprehensive plan, thoroughfare plan, Unified Development Code. This is the preliminary plat. A final plat will have to follow after approval of a preliminary plat. Again, utilities and drainage plan approval have been done. The TIA approval, that will be required prior to final plat approval. And again, Parkland dedication, SIA approval, and tree mitigation are not applicable in this instance. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Modern Green Ivy District for the following reasons. It is consistent with all the zoning requirements and the comprehensive plan. It conforms to the recently approved master plat. The proposed public improvements and easement meets the standards and are adequate. The final layout meets all standard for adequacy of public facilities. The plat conforms to the design requirements and standards, and also the plat conforms to the subdivision application checklist. The last slide is aerial photograph and a map of the plat, and that concludes my presentation.
We'll start with you, Mary. Do you have any questions or comments?
No questions at this time.
No comments?
No comments.
I've just got one question for staff. Since we last looked at this, has there been an agreement with the developer on access to the, to the development from the west?
to the development from the west or to the north?
Last year, council approved two development agreements, one for off-site infrastructure and one for onsite infrastructure. The off-site infrastructure had arrangements between the city, the districts there, both management districts and the developer to have South Spectrum there and continue all the way over onto Kirby. The developer's already completed South Spectrum to Promenade, which is the north-south road that's not there yet. And then, right now, final plans are about 100% for South Spectrum to go all the way over to Kirby, and that should probably go to construction, I'd say, this fall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify raising your right hand. Motion passes six-zero. Consideration and possible action Riverstone Ranch at Clear Creek Cluster Development Plan Amendment. This is a request of Jennifer Curtis of BGE. Carrie Gilbertson, Associate Applicant on behalf of Meritage Homes of Texas LLC, owner for the approval of an amendment to the Riverstone Ranch at Clear Creek Cluster Development Plan, generally located southeast of Riverstone Ranch Drive, south of the city of Houston, So, the general location, west of Clear Creek, southeast of Hughes Rose Road. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And also let the records show that Laney Cade had to step away from the meeting. So, we are at staff report.
Commission, this is an approval of a second amendment to the Riverstone Ranch Cluster Plan. The original amendment was approved in December 2006. First amendment was approved in 2015, and now tonight before use the second amendment. So, this amendment includes three components. The first component is an addition of tracks. The applicant is proposing to add three additional tracks, the Hart Thorne Track, the Blood Word Track, and the Scott Track, all totaling each about 4.9 acres, a little bit over that, which for a total proposed acreage addition of 14.72. And the map display shows where each of the proposed acreages are located in orange. Second component to the cluster is a revision to the parkland requirements. So, there's an update to the commitments of these parkland, public parkland fees, I'm sorry. And most of that is included in the development agreement, which was approved at the last council meeting. But just to summarize that, there's a fee in lieu of dedication. And so, from sections four to eight, the agreement includes that the developer will pay the previously rate, which is $750 per acreage. And then, the following sections will have a, will pay the dedication fee for the current fee at the time of plating. And for the final component, the developer will pay a sum of 200, a little over $200,000, $200,815 for the construction of a regional trail. The map actually shown on the screen shows the private parkland amenities, which includes internal trails. And then, that map actually has a little bit better connectivity of that internal trail system. There are three neighborhood parks that's shown on the map. There's landscaping and open space. And then, there is a trail network and amenitized detentions. Also, to the cluster, the developer added a commitment to lot distribution. Although the cluster requires a maximum density of 3.2 dwelling units per acre and a maximum lot count of 1,600, the developer and the city has had discussions, and the developer has agreed to commit to keep their lot distributions at the chart that's displayed on the screen before you. So, staff recommends approval of the amendment to the cluster plan because it meets the criteria of the UDC and is in conformance with all of the criteria. However, if the commission is recommending approval for tonight's cluster, staff has approval with the following conditions. We're requesting that the applicant remove all existing disclaimers from exhibits and tables, add language to the cluster that states any deviations from the amenity plan. Construction timelines or exhibits will need the approval of the community development director. P&amp;Z approval will only be needed when there's an addition to land being added to the cluster or when the community development director deems that those deviations are substantial. Adding language to the cluster that states any future sections will include a pocket park with enhanced amenities. Enhanced amenities will be defined in the design criteria. That must be approved by the director of the community development prior to construction. And adding language to the cluster that states all amenities, including landscaping, pocket parks, internal trails, et cetera, will be a part of the approved SIA or completed prior to the final plat approval. And prior to tonight's meeting, I actually received some more information from the developer, the applicant, and they are willing to meet all of these requirements. With the exception of a little bit language on the fourth one, they're proposing to not have the language that includes the last line, which stays complete before final plat. They're proposing to say it'll be approved with the additions into the SIA. But they are willing to add the additional language, and they've submitted documentation as such. But that concludes staff presentation.
So, they opposed the fourth item?
Not the fourth item in its entirety. They're proposing to add the language that states all future amenities, including landscaping, pocket parks, internal trails, et cetera, will be a part of an approved SIA and leave out the last or completed before final plat approval. They don't want that language. But that concludes staff report. The applicant is here if you have any questions, and staff is here for questions as well.
And that falls back on the issues we have with final plats needing to happen before a lot of things line up. So, I certainly don't have any problem with the, as long as it's under the SIA. So, if I could lead off, I think Mary and I are the only ones on the commission that remember this one the first time it come through.
Probably in this time.
I think the first time it come through, I wasn't on the commission, but the second time, second time around it was. Just for information purposes for the other commissioners, that we don't see a lot of cluster development plans. They come before this commission only. So, what comes out of this meeting, unless it's negative, is approved and goes forward from here. I've got a couple of questions for staff, just to clarify how all this package came together. And this was, this was work from staff, city manager, the developer, and in this case, the home builder as well. Correct?
Correct. And there's a, with this cluster, we've actually tied it to the development agreement. So, the development agreement went before council at the last city council moving.
Last one.
Yes.
So, the city and staff is good, except for the four recommended additions and striking completed before final plat approval from item four. Okay, we'll start with Daryl. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Again, this was one of the first clusters that we looked at when these were more prevalent. We used to get cluster developments. We don't get them much anymore. It had a lot of things in the detention pond areas that were different than what our standard was, which I liked. So, I'm glad to see this one moving along and finishing up that neighborhood. Any other discussion? So, we need a, we would need an amended motion, or motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend.
Okay, is your, does your, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but does your motion include the four items striking completed before final plat approval from item four?
Yes. My motion is for the four items that staff recommends, minus the last one.
We have a motion to amend, adding the four items striking completed before final plat approval on item four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion to amend in a second. All those in favor of amending the motion signify raising your right hand? That motion, whoops, sorry.
I was going to recommend, before you take a vote on it, if legal department could weigh in on removing the striking of the last item pursuant to the UDC, whether that item is in the cluster plan or not, as an off-site or onsite infrastructure. It needs to be built in compliance with the plans prior to final plat approval. So, removing it from the cluster plan language doesn't control, the UDC will always control. And pursuant to the UDC, you have to have that requirement satisfied.
Regardless of whether we struck it or not, UDC's going to rule anyway.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the two of you at the same time.
Regardless of what we do, the UDC is going to control anyway.
It is, but I think it's important to call back to the developers' attention, as they might be under the impression that the cluster plan is controlling. And at the end of the day, city staff is going to say that the UDC adopted by city council cannot be overwritten by the planning and zoning commission through a cluster plan process.
Could I speak?
That's at the chair's discretion.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead. Just state your name and position for the record.
Hi. Good evening. Jennifer Curtis, BGE. Carrie Gilbertson, Associate. It's the applicant on behalf of the developer. I understand that typically, the construction plans have to be approved with final plat and construction of the improvements have to be done before final plat can be approved. However, my understanding is that for all of Riverstone Ranch, I believe, except for one section, the developer has provided an approved subdivision improvement agreement in place of having the actual improvements constructed at the time of final plat. And that has been the status quo. And I believe that is a normal method of completing subdivisions in the city of Pearland. So, if that's not the case, then I'd like to know.
So, it sounds like the applicant and staff and legal have some things to work out. I'm okay with the wording in item four. I'm, we're here to give our opinions. I understand why final plats needed before things are built, but I'm opposed to that process because it puts a lot of extra work on city staff to follow up after that final plat's been given, to make sure that all the items in that TIA, or the subdivision improvement agreement, are done. Having seen this in two subdivisions that I'm familiar with, this process can go on for months, getting things the way they're supposed to be according to the subdivision improvement agreement. So, I don't have any issue with the wording here. The UDC is always going to rule. And if legal would weigh in, is the wording the way it is acceptable to the city?
Yes, it is, because that's the wording that is actually in the UDC. That's the reason why staff had it here, saying you have to do one or the other. And the only reason why we use the SIA process or subdivision improvement agreement process is because that is allowed inside the UDC in chapter three. So, that's where our ability to accept an SIA in lieu of the improvement comes from. That's where it flows from.
It's either going to be one or the other. It's either going to be built and approved, or it's going to be part of the SIA.
Correct. And some developers, depending on where they are, and I don't believe we've had any difficulties with Riverstone Ranch on this particular development, but some developments, instead of going and getting a bond and paying the interest on the bond, depending on the nature of the improvement, it's outstanding, especially if it's a pocket park or what they call a softscape amenity, would prefer to just build the park. They might have the equipment and the resources, and they don't want to be forced to do the SIA process because they have to pay interest on the bond. Of course, that's always the developer's discretion, and we're not going to say you have to do one way, but that's why the UDC allows you to have two methods of having that happen.
The only item I support for giving final plat approval is the caveat with HLP, having to have the lot numbers before, you have to have the final plat. It's one or the other. And I just don't agree with some of the things, some of these subdivisions, you want to see the things built so that they can be inspected one time and be done. We've seen subdivisions without roads in place, without stormwater pumps in place, get final plat, and the next day, there's issues with subdivision, turning over HOAs to the residents, and there's still items not done from the subdivision's development a year before. So, I support this if we want to strike that amendment.
I was going to say, currently, if I understand the record correctly, there was a motion in a second. You were about to announce a reading on the vote. The motion, the amended motion had removed, I would say, the last clause of item number four. And we can either vote on it, turn it down, and then it goes back to the original motion, or we can have a, after the comment, trying to think procedurally, if you can make a revised amendment, and I believe that you could.
So, let's do it this way. Let's take a vote on this one and then redo this.
Thank you.
So, we have an amended motion on the table, which strikes wording from item four. All those in favor of this amended motion signify raising your right hand. All those opposed? That amended motion fails of zero, or five to zero?
Correct.
So, do I hear a motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend to keep the language in section four as is? The whole staff recommendation, one through four.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend with items, with staff recommendations, items one through four. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the amended motion signify raising your right hand? Motion passes five-zero. So, now we have an amended motion on the table, including staff recommendations. Is there any further discussion on this item?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify raising your right hand? Motion passes five-zero. Moving on to item F. Consideration and possible action zone change 18-00003. This is a request of Tetra Surveys, represented by David White, applicant on behalf of Presidio Equities LLC, represented by Ryan Taft, owner, for the approval of an addendum to add land and change the zoning from light industrial M1 zoning district to a planned development PD, Rice Dryer Business Park Zoning District, on approximately 22.8627 acres of land. This is approximately 22 acres on the southwest corner of Rice Dryer Road and North Main Street, Highway 35, with State Highway 35, with an address of 1916 North Main Street. Do I hear a motion?
I move that it be approved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. We have a staff presentation. This item was previously in our joint public hearing. Does staff wish to add any information to this item?
No further comment.
The commissioners have any questions or comments for staff, starting with Mary?
No, I don't have any.
No comments?
No comments.
The only comment I have there is I find it interesting that no one come in opposed to this one. And there were quite a few things that were discussed about not being able to do business in Pearland. Employees were going to run away, lose their jobs, and no one's here for this amendment. So... So I've always supported this development because it seems really good for that area. Any further comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify raising your right hand. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item four, discussion items, commissioners' activity report. Anyone? Okay, item two, our next regular P&amp;Z meeting, May 7, 2018. I understand from staff that that will be a very busy meeting. There's quite a few items on the agenda. Okay, hearing... Staff have anything else?
No, that's it.
Anything? Okay, move on to item five, adjourn at 7:43.